In order, this is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, and the time is 7:05 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a number of items in the table file?
Yes, in tonight's table file, we had a narrative for the District Youth Council presentation. There were a number of personnel items, including appointments, changes in assignment, and resignation. We have a grant request. We also have several updated items in the table file related to our resolutions canvassing the November 6 election. These are just items that were updated between the time that the packet was sent out in this evening. We have an updated quote for the proposed gymnastics equipment purchase, and I've also added just a brief "Every Student Succeeds" update at the end in the items for information. So those are your changes for this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. And just a note, I wanted to make, the District Youth Council presentation, which is third on the agenda for Item for Discussion and Reports, we will need to time that around an 8:15 timeframe, so because one of the council presenters is not able to be here till then. So we'll move through the agenda and come back to that presentation if that is the way the timing works. So if everyone is okay with that, that's how we'll proceed with the agenda. So we now have an opportunity for public comments. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School Board to address the board. Is there any Northfield Public School District, excuse me, to address their board? Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? No? Okay. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, we have three announcements this evening. The first is, I'm just giving board members a head up, that we'll be doing our annual hearing about the World's Best Workforce Plan just before the December 10th Board Meeting. So that will be where we have that 6:30 PM hearing. It's a presentation by Director of Teaching and Learning Mary Grace Hansen and Director of Assessment Services Hope Langston. And then we'll have our regular Board Meeting at 7 o'clock that evening. Also, just want to congratulate Principal Nancy Antoin and Bridgewater Elementary on just another fantastic Veterans Day ceremony. I was not able to make it there this year, but they sent me tons of different photos. And again, they have brought in the Believe It!, which is a group that actually does service dogs for returning veterans who suffer from PTSD. A number of veterans from the community, it's really a community-wide celebration. There are always a ton of veterans there, and the kids just do such a great job with the program. And so we just are very thankful for Bridgewater being one of the main places for our Veterans Day program. And so, great job there. You'll be able to see those pictures on our social media accounts in the coming days. And then, this is literally hot off the presses. I just saw it from the Minnesota Association of School Administrators Twitter account this afternoon, that the University of Minnesota, the Humphrey School for Public Affairs, every year does a contest for local government innovation awards. And so what they're looking for is, they're looking for organizations, cities, counties, school districts, and then they also have a Native American category as well for innovation in those programming areas. The University of Minnesota Humphrey School of Public Affairs, this afternoon, announced 19 winners of local government innovation awards, and I'm proud to tell you, Northfield Public Schools is on that list. And so we were highlighted for our transition to our self-funded health insurance. Director of Human Resources Molly Beeselman, just a couple of meetings ago, came and shared with you the national recognition that we've received for the efficiency of our program. And so, we will be one of 19 institutions honored on December 13th. There's a dinner at the University of Minnesota. And so, just a great shout out to Director of Human Resources Molly Beeselman, Director of Finance Val Mertzendorf, teachers like Ray Kudre, who's been on that committee since the beginning, Carol Beamer, one of our educational assistants. And we really have a benefits package that is very efficient and cost-effective. We haven't raised our health insurance premiums in five years. How many people can say that? And so, we're really proud of that innovative work, the hard work that our staff did together to get us to that point, because the important piece is, you know, it helps us recruit and retain the best employees for the school system. So we're really thrilled to be honored by the Humphrey School of Public Affairs. More to come on that.
Wow. That is exciting. So, are you probably not able to top that one, huh?
I think that's it for the evening. Well, actually, I think we can top it with our first item, so...
Okay, excellent. Any other thing board members would like to add? Any other? Yeah.
I just want to say, I mean, my, I guess my tear ducts have gotten a lot of work out recently, because, well, we had the National American Scholar Recognition Event tonight, but over the weekend, I went to see the high school play, Our Town, and it was beautiful, and, well, I'll just leave it at that.
Great, very well done.
Excellent, thank you. Any other board members? Okay. So we will move on to items on the agenda. The first item for Discussion and Report is the Bond Referendum Review. And yes, I agree, Dr. Hillman, we have some pretty incredible news to share about the bond referendum.
So, you know, we've given a bond referendum update at each Board Meeting since you called the election in August, and so I thought it was appropriate just to provide a final report of the communication, the other pieces that we did prior to the election. As we say, we've said it before, we'll always say it, the voters are always right. You know, after we were successful with the operating levy in 2017, we were very grateful for that. And of course, when the bond referendum didn't pass in 2017, we didn't whine, we didn't complain. You know, we said, "What's next?", and we listened to the community. And obviously, our listening was very good, because 62% of the voters approved the $40.975 million bond referendum. We are very grateful to our community, we're very thankful for the support and the confidence that people have in the school district. Just to review some of the strategies that we use, because I think it's important to reflect at the end of these kinds of things, you know, our informational website contained a lot of text video resources, it had a tax impact calculator, and a frequently asked questions document. You know, one of the differences between this year's informational campaign and last year's is that we have our new social media accounts, and we know that there were 12 posts specific to the referendum on our social media accounts. And if you look at the Facebook traffic, those posts earned 170 likes, were shared 146 times, and reached, according to Facebook, 19,526 users. When we did the tally in the end, we had at least 40 opportunities for the public to engage in some kind of personal, personal presentation about the referendum. That could have been some of the things that we did on KYMN Radio, it could have been the four presentations and tours that we did at Greenville Park, the Greenville Park Community Dinner, we had a number of parent meetings, presentations to the community like Rotary and Chamber of Commerce meetings. We also have gone back to doing some more direct mail, so three pieces of direct mail were sent to residents. We used informational stickers on popcorn boxes and things like that, because we know when we analyzed the data from last year, only 60% of the district's parents voted in the election. And so, really wanting to make sure that no stone was left unturned, so that folks knew exactly what was going on. So we had a lot of that kind of thing. We had informational graphics all over, just really getting the information out that we had the election on November 6th, because we knew it was a crowded ballot. We even had creative things like documents that showed people, you had to flip the ballot over. So those things were all really important. We used strategic informational public signage, as you saw. We did actually some informational radio spots on KYMN, again, just driving people back to the website. We had two official district op-ed pieces in the Northfield News, and we had a number of other individual conversations. So everybody at this table, and many, many more, were involved in that informational campaign. So I just want to thank board members, I want to thank Val Mertzendorf, Jim Cullseth, Sam Murchison, Erin Bailey, Anita Ozzy, who just did a tremendous amount of work on the election side of this. Really a total team effort, and we're very thrilled with the results. It was just a great week for kids. We're going to be able to put together what I think is a best-in-class early childhood center that is going to really, I think, draw people to the community, and then really attack the achievement gap before it even starts. So we are really thrilled with the results, and want to thank folks for it. So what's next? We're going to canvass the election results tonight. And then what we'll be doing from there is, actually, Val has been working to finalize the request for proposals for architectural services, for construction management services, and financial investment services. Our intention is to have those three, those three folks selected before the winter break, so that right when we come back from winter break, we'll be able to invite the community and other individuals to be teachers and students where appropriate, to be part of the site design teams. I think a lot of people think about this as a new elementary school, but there are really five projects involved. So we will have five design teams that we'll be inviting people to be part of, and give us their feedback. Of course, at the end, you get the final decision as the board, but we want to make sure we have as much of a cross-section of the community as possible, who are giving us feedback about the specifics of the architectural plans and the construction process. So we'll be working through those things in the next few weeks, and the community can expect to see that on our website, through our social media channels, and of course, Northfield News. And KYMN will be asking them to help us get that word out. So it's on to what is next, and we are excited to move forward. And you know, what we've said too, is we just really pledge to the community that we'll be good stewards of your tax dollars that you've entrusted to us. We're going to make it a very warm and welcoming learning environment in all of these projects, but we're also going to be practical. We're going to try to construct facilities that we can expect to last for generations, and we look forward to that process. So thank you, board members, for your support. Thank you to the community for their support, and everyone who helped us work on the bond referendum. So that is the final bond referendum report for 2018.
Excellent, thank you. Board members, comments, questions? Amy?
I just have a question about architecture, and how you, how, is there going to be like one architectural firm, or several for, to cover all the projects? And, you know, if you could just comment on how that selection is made?
So, we are putting the request for proposal together. We are looking to secure the services of one architectural firm and one construction management firm, because while the projects are all separate, they are also interrelated in a lot of ways. So what we're looking at is, we're looking for architectural firms that have a tremendous amount of experience doing schoolwork, and understand what learning communities look like, so we'll be looking at that. We'll be looking at people who have a documented track record of successful, being on time and on budget, and all those kinds of things. And we know there's a number of firms within the state of Minnesota that meet those criteria. We expect to have between three and seven applicants. Is that probably about right, Val? I mean, we're thinking that that's going to be about the right number. And so, we're really looking for one architectural firm to help us. Now, of course, within these architectural firms, they have a number of architects themselves. And so, you know, folks who are more focused on renovation projects, or people who are focused on new construction projects. So we know there's some great firms with wonderful reputations in the state, and again, we want to make sure that we get someone who's got a proven track record, so that we can make sure that the community gets what they have paid for, and it's on budget and on time.
Thank you. Great question. Other questions, comments?
Okay, well, again, I think you, you know, the recap was really great, and I think that, you know, as a board, we understand it's our most difficult decision we make to put a question on the ballot, and to have the trust and the confidence of the community to approve the projects. It's just been really gratifying for all of us, and we're extremely grateful to the community for that support. So it is an exciting future for Northfield Public Schools, for sure. So, excellent.
Okay, we will move on to our next item, which is Strategic Plan Staff Survey. Dr. Hillman?
So in 2016, we adopted our current strategic plan, and one of the things that we're trying to do each year is to do with our staff, just to check in, in terms of where are people at, in terms of making sure that they understand what the strategic plan is, that they're giving us feedback in terms of how they think we are aligning our decisions, you know, here at the Board, and also our administrative staff with the strategic plan. So I have attached the report, it's in the packet, and what we had is, we had it available for several weeks. It was communicated to staff members in two different editions of the District Staff Newsletter. We had only 55 people participate in that survey this year compared to 79 from last year, but the data is the data. So we share the data and talk with you about it. So you see the questions that were there? There are five questions. Are you aware of the strategic plan? On a scale of 1 to 4, how well do you understand our strategic plan, the role you play in its success? What is your belief about the achievability of the near-term and ongoing priorities? Do you have a decision, do you view decision-making in the district as aligned with the strategic plan? And then any other comments? And we've included comparisons from 2018 and 2017 with you. Now, we have a lower N than we did last year, so that can account for a little bit of the variation. You'll see that we had a slight dip in terms of the awareness of the plan, but we actually increased, or a slight dip in the awareness and the understanding. We saw an increase, though, in the belief that we can achieve those near-term and ongoing priorities. We also had a substantial increase in people looking at the decision-making aligning with the strategic plan. We've also provided in the packet for you a building-by-building analysis, in terms of number of respondents and percentages, and so I will allow you to take a look at those. You can also see the average ratings on the Likert scale, and we've included all seven comments. We, as you know, I think that strategic plans are not something that sit on a shelf and gather dust, or, you know, file on some server and collect digital dust. So this spring, we'll be looking at and saying, is it time to look at, how can we tweak our strategic plan moving forward? Because I think we just need to be much more nimble than we have in the past, and be relooking at those goals. Strategic plans cannot be set-it-and-forget-it kinds of things. So this spring, we'll be coming to you talking about just some modifications to how we organize the strategic plan, and really potentially looking at more SMART goals, very specific goals, that would be included in the strategic plan. Now, that's typically a no-no amongst strategic plan purists, but we believe as we're moving forward into really looking at measuring what matters, making sure that we're providing very clear direction, and making sure we're giving the community very clear results of how we're moving toward those goals. So you can expect me to bring that back in the spring. But we wanted just to share the report with you, and we can go from there. So if people have questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Excellent, thank you. Questions, comments, board members have? Amy?
Me again.
Oh, it's fine.
No, I was, I was looking at the comments, and I thought one comment in particular was really interesting and a good idea, and that's the third one down. "The strategic plan is not discussed on a regular basis or in concrete ways that can help everyday learners at our women." Yeah, I like the part of it that says, "People should always have a nugget or two to think about each week in solid, attainable ways to make a change." And that's part of that comment. And I just wanted to say that. I'm sure you're doing many things along that line, but it seemed very SMART.
But feedback, this is why we ask for feedback. And so you know that when we have brought a number of decisions to you, we very explicitly say to you which of the ongoing priorities or the near-term priorities that it aligns with. And in the school improvement plans, if you remember that, the school improvement plans, each of their goals also specifically aligns that. Where I think we have an area for growth is when we send the District Staff Newsletter out after the Board Meeting, we need to include that in the decision as well. So we've left that as part of the materials for you only. We think what we probably need to do is, when we align that, that we just need to communicate that as part of the staff newsletter that goes out afterwards, because you would actually have to take the time to take a look at the packet, which sometimes can be daunting, right? How big the packets get, to be able to get that. So that's just an example of, we've already got the content, we've, it's just a matter of taking it one step further. So we are always trying to get better at communication. So again, what we love about this survey is, we want people to know that we read the surveys, we actually do something with the results, and we try to take steps that are responsive to the feedback that they provide. So I really appreciate you pointing that out. And I think the other thing that was pointed out here that has got me thinking that we need to go against the purists of strategic plans, is the fact that there's some fair points, that almost all strategic plans are very broad, you know, to the point where you want every stakeholder in the system to be able to see themselves as part of it. But what you get on the other side is then some folks, rightfully so, saying, "Well, you could probably align anything that you want to do with a strategic plan," and we want to be careful about that, too. So that's what's driving, you know, looking at some more very specific goals at the district level. So again, this is just excellent feedback, it's why we ask for it, because we don't want it just to be something that sits on a shelf. And, you know, folks took the time to share their thoughts, and we'll use them. And if there's something that we can't take action on, we just need to let people know, "Hey, great piece of feedback, here's why we aren't able to do that at this time."
Excellent. Other questions, comments?
No, I really appreciate that, that we are doing the surveys, and when you think where we were in 2016 adopting the strategic plan, and really to be able to see two years later as we continue to move forward, and in the plan, and the commitment to the plan, and I think as board members, we've often expressed that we like to see the alignment with decision-making, and that when things come to us, we can see how they directly relate to the strategic plan. So I think the, you know, your plan going forward, in terms of presenting some other ways that we can modify and update and refresh it, I think are excellent. Rob?
When we're talking about alignment, I'm just wondering, when we have the, for example, World's Best Workforce thing, we have certain things like achievement gap, which I think is very important, which is not necessarily part of the strategic plan, or, I mean, I'm wondering about it taking the alignment further up, so that it also aligns with the state mandates or expectations?
I think you'll really like the thought processes that we have coming this spring, because that's exactly, there are, we're looking at five different pillars that we're going to be looking at for categorizing our annual goal. Some of them are finance, some of them are about people, and of course, one of them is about academics. And as we think moving forward, what are those pieces, the strategic, World's Best Workforce and Northfield Promise Goals align very well. So we're looking at, how can we integrate all of those pieces into the plan again? And then, those goals and those pillar areas, those areas that we know are really important, you know, to run the district effectively and efficiently, looking at those goals being set on an annual basis. So really, a school improvement plan at the district level, which is the way we've been navigating toward, but I think that this pillar approach, where we have these categories, and then be able to roll in some of those other outside expectations are going to be important. Doesn't limit it, right? Doesn't limit it to that, but we completely agree that, whereas you've seen, we're also aligning things with that World's Best Workforce and the Northfield Promise Goals. Case in point, our work on kindergarten readiness, our work on third-grade reading, social, emotional, and connectedness, all of those things that we know are so important for kids to be able to be successful as they move forward. So again, we're, we have a lot of people who think they should tell us what to do, right? In terms of a number of different governmental agencies, and trying to put it all into an area where we can be very intentional about the steps that we take. And because when we take some step, when we say yes to some things that we're prioritizing, that by default means we're saying no to some others. And I think that to be a successful organization, you have to focus on the most important things. As we would talk about measuring what matters, you know, making sure that we are narrowing our focus to provide just, not just good service, but excellent service in those areas. Good question, Rob.
Yeah, excellent question, Rob. Okay, any other last, other questions, comments?
Okay. Well, we're rifling through the reports tonight, for sure. So as I had alluded in the beginning of the meeting, we will move forward with the other items on the agenda, and when the District Youth Council is able to present, we will have them do that at that time, around an 8:15 timeframe. So we will move on then, to the approval of the consent agenda. As a reminder, we did have a number of items, a few personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of the approval of the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on now to items for individual action. I think we will actually set a school board record this evening for the number of resolutions we have in one meeting, so everyone hang on. We have another number of items to work through in terms of the, both the school board election and the bond election. First item for individual action is canvassing return of the votes of the school district's general election for school board members. Is there a motion to approve the adoption of the resolution canvassing return of votes of the school district's general election as presented? Need a motion? Moved by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. It is a roll call vote. Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
Quinale?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. So we will move on to our second item, which is resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing school board district clerk to perform other election duties. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties as presented? Moved by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Again, a roll call vote. Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
Quinale?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I see Tom in the audience, so we should congratulate Tom Broniek in terms of his election to the school board, and we'll welcome you in January, Tom.
Yes, thank you. All right. Our third resolution is canvassing the results of the November 6, 2018 special election. Just to be sure we are in compliance, I will go ahead and read the motion. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution canvassing returns of votes of the school district's special election held on November 6, 2018, on the question of shall the Board of Independent School Districts 659 Northfield Public Schools be authorized to issue its general obligation school-building bonds in amount not to exceed $40,975,000 to provide funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the construction and equipping of a new elementary school facility, the construction of additions to and renovations of the Bridgewater and Sibley Elementary School sites and facilities, the construction of renovations and improvements to Longfellow School, and the construction and renovations and improvements at the Greenville Park Elementary to convert that facility for use as an early childhood education center, of which 8,869 voted in favor and 5,367 voted against the same. Said proposition having received the approval of at least a majority of such votes is hereby declared to have carried. So after all that, we need a motion. Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Again, a roll call vote. Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
Quinale?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Our next item for individual action is the co-curricular additions or reductions. These are the items, as you saw in your packet, there was further information regarding those additions and reductions. There was some dollars put to that, to those recommended additions and positions. So prior to discussion or comments, if I could have a motion to approve the co-curricular additions, reductions, or modifications to positions, and the associated stipend amount recommended by the district's co-curricular committee as presented. Your motion? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. Okay, so is there any questions or comments regarding, again, we saw this at our last Board Meeting, but there were some total costs added to the recommended additions, so if there's any questions regarding that? No? Okay. Oh, Amy, yes.
Sorry, I always have questions.
Yeah, no worries.
So, I just wanted to know a little bit more about the golf coaches, and I know that we're not allowed to have, so where the funding for those would come from, and how many, if we know how many students are in sixth grade golf now, and just whatever you can tell me about those positions.
So I'm going to ask Activities Director Joel Wilson to step up to the mic to help us out with this one, too, and Val Mertzendorf. So the key thing is that, one of the pieces that we want to share is that, as you know, we actually have very few middle school, school district-run activities. A lot of our, a lot of athletics within the community are run by the local associations. And so, to tell you how many sixth graders will be out this year, we cannot tell you that, because those students are brand-new, and they've not registered yet. Over the past several years, we have seen an increase in the students who are participating in golf at the middle school, and we want to be able to expand that to sixth graders. So Joel, would you just talk a little bit about what the co-curricular committee discussed with us?
The conversation was, first of all, good evening, Board. My name's Joel, I'm the Activities Director here at the high school. The co-curricular committee talked about, the high school has a 9-12 program, and so we have, kids from a high school-y perspective can participate at the high school level. Middle school has seventh and eighth grade, and they can compete at a middle school level. Some of those kids get moved up because of talent or other things. Sixth graders have not been able to participate, because they're, the model is a seventh and eighth grade model for middle school for competition. Request is made to include sixth graders because they are part of the middle school to be able to participate in the program and then compete against other sixth grade students that in other schools that have those programs. So the essential was just to have another coach to help with that addition of having sixth graders come out and provide another opportunity for those kids to do a sport at the middle school.
Are there currently two coaches for both the boys and the girls?
I think there's only, I think there's only, we have one for each grade, yep.
Yep, so.
I don't think there's four.
So there, I believe that there's a head coach and an assistant coach that does 7-12 right now. So there's four coaches total between the girls and the boys. And so my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, would be that the head coach and assistant coach would continue with the 9-12 because of the enrollment and then there would be a 6-8 coach added. Okay, so we currently have two girls' coaches and two boys' coaches. This would allow them to focus on the high school and then the new coaches would focus on the middle school? I believe so.
Correct.
Okay. And then my other question was, maybe this is more Matt or Val question, but do we know how the funding is gonna work with this or is? There would be some funding from the activity fee revenue. Obviously, there's a fee charge to participate in the sport. It certainly doesn't offset the entire cost. The rest of it would come from the general fund. It would be in addition to the budget.
And we have, that's the way almost all of our activities programs work. We collect the fees, but we do use the general fund to also support those co-curricular activities. It is a learning experience that kids have in a way other than the traditional classroom. So we know that those are really important and we've supported them, you know, over the years by basically offsetting, you know, what we don't bring in revenue from the fees. But there, this is an area unlike others, when we add a class, for example, we don't always have the additional revenue, you know, to be able to offset that. In this case, we do have some additional revenue to offset that.
Well, and the explanation that these two would focus on the middle school makes sense to me because as I was reading this, it sounded like they were just focusing on the sixth graders and I understand it better now, so.
And Amy, to your question before, to be clear, Val was exactly right. We had two coaches, a head and an assistant for boys and for girls that was going for 7-12. So the description that Val had was exactly what it is.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about this proposal?
I think it's a good idea, again, to have those, to give opportunities for kids and I think that's what we're about with the activities program is finding opportunities and if we can fund those opportunities, that's just a bonus for that.
I would also say that we have had multiple experiences where if the numbers for the sport aren't there, we have not hired the coach. So just because we have the position doesn't mean we would fill it if no sixth graders came out.
Okay, excellent. Other questions or comments? Joel, thank you. Joel introduced himself because he has been, you started with the district on July 1st and here we are November 13th and it's the first opportunity you've had to be before the board, so it's a good thing.
We've been keeping him busy.
Yes. We've all obviously met you and it's your first time at a board meeting, so we welcome you to the board.
Thank you.
Yes, and to the district, of course.
And do you notice the sign that he's sitting under?
I think he's talking about amazing, which we would all agree with.
Well, athletic directors definitely have a very interesting and challenging position and we're grateful you're here to do the work, do this important work because we talk about how important co-curricular is in developing our students and the opportunities that they have in co-curricular and we're really fortunate as a district that we are able to offer such a broad range of co-curricular opportunities, whether it's athletics or fine arts or robotics. So we're really, really fortunate and so it's times like this where, you know, we're able to respond to the number of students that participate. I think we have seventy-four percent of our high school.
That's the number from last year, yep.
That participate in some sort of activity. So it's really important and it's great that we have the ability to support, to support this and we are also very grateful for the number of coaches we have that come out and do this work because they do a great job and it's, you know, very difficult to manage a lot of kids and, you know, the demands on their time as coaches and so we really appreciate that they step up and do this for our students. So we do have a motion and a second and if there are no further questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on now to the gymnastics equipment purchase. Just for board members to realize, note that we did have an updated quote that was part of your table file, so be sure as we move forward with discussing this motion that we're looking at the information that was presented in the table file. So prior, because it's the item for individual action, I'd like to ask for a motion and then we'll have discussion and Val is able to provide some other further context. So is there a motion to approve the purchase of official competition gymnastics equipment as presented? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Rob. Okay, so Val, why don't you give us an overview and then we'll have an opportunity for questions and comments.
So this is obviously a little unusual from our normal protocol, but we found out last Monday that there were some unanticipated construction delays at the Farmington facility that we were planning to lease from. And their anticipated open date at this point is Christmas, so we'd be looking really at after winter break, which would mean that nearly fifty percent of the season would be complete. So we kind of went back to the drawing board and discussed the options. We did reach out to basically every gym within a thirty-minute radius, obviously all of which are full at capacity because it is gymnastics season. We do have variable offered up basically after 8:00 p.m. and so they are, practice started on Monday, so they are utilizing that option this week. It is not ideal because they do typically have three-hour practices and we obviously can't expect them to practice till 11:00 p.m. So they are making it work right now with what they have. We did also have a very generous offer from Chris Bounde, who owns the old Kmart facility, and he has one space that is still not leased and they're not anticipating a lease until March or April. And he offered it up basically free of charge, twenty-two thousand square feet. We would just need the equipment, obviously. So that is what is up for discussion tonight. The proposal or the quote that was in the table file is the most recent. All of the equipment is used or demo equipment, just based on the timeframe we were looking at. To actually order new equipment requires multiple months for shipping. And so all of the equipment is used or demo in good condition. We've seen pictures of most of it and it looks fine and ready to use and they can ship it within seven days, have it delivered and installed within seven to ten days. So that really met our timeframe that we were looking at. So from our perspective, we were probably looking at purchasing this next year anyway because we need a long-term solution. We would be looking at using our operating capital fund balance. We have over five hundred thousand dollars still in that fund balance, which is well over our goal of, I believe we had about two hundred thousand as the goal, so we have sufficient funds. This is one of the many reasons I say fund balance is important. It allows us to respond if needed. So I think those are all my points.
And I would just like to point out too that, you know, again, this is not the kind of thing that we normally do where we bring something to ask for your approval of this size of one meeting, but it meets the criteria of why we do it. It's when there's an unanticipated issue, emergency kind of circumstance and so we just normally, you know, you get to look at it once and then we bring it back the next time for approval, but we just don't have the time to do that. In addition, you know, we were planning to spend, if you think about it, about twenty-eight thousand dollars on the Farmington lease because the lease itself was ten thousand dollars and then the transportation costs were going to be about eighteen thousand dollars. So that was money that we already had anticipated on spending. Now, that would have been different funding accounts, of course, but I want to come back to what Val had said about the, about the fund balance because this is exactly why we carry this, so that we, when we have a surprise, we had all indications that the Farmington facility was going to be ready and it's not.
I asked multiple times.
So the fact is that this allows us in what is all as well, none of us prefer to have our gymnastics girls going outside of the community, none of us prefer that. So at the end of the day, we have a location in town that we will be able to have for both practices and competitions and it is, it is a, it's a solution that will be the best that we're able to do as we seek a long-term solution. So I appreciate the work that Val and activities director Joel Olson, head coach Leann have done, you know, to put this together, to get things ready for the girls and we appreciate their patience as we have tried to solve this as quickly as we possibly can.
Great question. Amy?
So does it increase our liability for insurance purposes? Does that? No, it would not increase our liability. We would likely list the Kmart facility as a named insured on our policy temporarily for the season so that, and we'll have a kind of hold harmless lease agreement that basically says if anyone's injured, it's on our policy and not theirs. But it wouldn't cost more.
It wouldn't cost more?
No.
Because we would have needed that anyway.
Yes. Yep, we would have done the same thing with Farmington.
Good question. Jeff?
Sounds like a big break. In fact, you're gonna get that equipment anyway and then, you know, what would, if this wouldn't have come through, what would you do?
I don't know. I just take this one day at a time.
We've looked through, you know, the issue is, and this is, this is an example of why the additional elementary school is gonna serve things other than just elementary school students. As people who are in the activities within the community know, while we have a really solid elementary school gymnasiums, our elementary school gymnasiums are bigger than most elementary schools. We have the ability to do competitions, of course, at Bridgewater and Sibley and Greenville Park is a large gym, but adding that new gym is going to be a big deal because we already are at a shortage of gym space. So my understanding is years ago, we actually had our gymnastics team, you know, perform at one of our school buildings, but as we have had an expansion of activities, really they need their own dedicated space and not in a gymnasium. So we would have had to have looked internally, but we're very grateful for the Brown family, for them stepping forward to fill this community need. And as we said, at the, at the end of the day, it's gonna take a little bit of time. We are thankful for the patience and the flexibility that the program has demonstrated. We have a plan to get it done and I'm sure that they're gonna have a great season and then we'll be figuring out the long-term solution, which we knew we were gonna have to figure out the long-term solution, but our goal was to get the season started and then be able to look at addressing that from there.
No.
Question, the equipment, some of it's used and some of it's new. Is there certification, safety certification and so on, on even the used equipment?
You know, that's a good question. I'm not a hundred percent sure about that one. Joel, do you know if the equipment would be?
Yes, and we're pretty efficient checking. I'll have our coach.
Grant, by Leann to the microphone.
The answer to that is yes. The company that Val has actually been working with, if anything is wrong with the equipment or the judges deem something is incorrect about it, they will take it back. It's fully, anything that, yeah, warranty, the warranty is, even though it's demo equipment, they will warranty it in full if anything happens to be wrong. And it all has to meet, before they can even send it out, it has to meet the current standards, gymnastics rulebook standards.
And I think Midwestern Gym Supply is a reputable outfit that lots of people buy their equipment from.
Yes.
So it's, I think that that's the other key thing, no less, we're not buying it off the internet, you know, we're going to a company that has a, you know, a very good reputation.
Safety, yeah.
We'd most likely have been buying it from them next year.
Correct.
Thank you, Leann.
Good questions, everyone. No, did you have anything else? Okay, Rob?
No.
Nice, no, go ahead.
Okay, I don't know. It's been a long time since I've written something out, so I thought I'd do it this time, since it's a fairly significant unforeseen expenditure. Since it became clear that the high school districts, that the school districts longstanding relationship with the local gymnastics club had come to an end, it has impressed me, what has impressed me the most is the passion with which former Northfield High School gymnasts have spoken about their experience on the high school team. Younger gymnasts have talked about finding role models among the older girls on the team. To me, the fact that the high school gymnastic team is cultivating strong and positive role models for young girls is incredibly important. And in a powerful letter to the editor in the Northfield News, former high school gymnast Abby and Emily Stetz wrote about how participation in gymnastics was part of a well-rounded high school education that taught them the values of, quote, teamwork, discipline, leadership, and persistence. Skills, they wrote, that we now apply to academics, relationships, careers, and community service. I'm pleased that the Northfield High School offers a gymnastics program that helps to form such thoughtful and well-rounded young people and I'm perfectly prepared to support this motion. I'm also very thankful to Val for all of her hard work in making sure that the team has the facilities and the equipment to start the season and also to Leann and to Joel for their hard work.
Excellent, well said. Thank you, Bob. Other questions, comments? Amy?
So I think it's really important to support the team and I think this is a great, I'm impressed I pulled this all together so quickly. My question is about next year and I guess I, what sort of the long-term plans are after this year? So we don't have formal long-term plans yet. The plan was to get them started with their current season and then start meeting about what, what the options are and what, what would be best to serve the students. And so that is something that will be taking place over the next couple of months to basically develop a long-term plan, so.
And we'll be looking, I mean, the key thing is, I think, you know, of our priorities, you know, number one, that we have a dedicated facility, you know, that is our facility that provide, that we have the main access to, to provide the convenient times for our gymnastics program to practice, that we get the prime time, kind of after-school practice time, that we have the ability to store our equipment, not having to move it, you know, regularly, that we have appropriate areas for the teams to put their stuff and all the kinds of things that go with an activity area, places to change, those kinds of things, and a place that's gonna be big enough and consistent enough. So we are, we'll start working with folks in the community to seek that long-term solution out. I know that we will talk with the folks that we talk with about what are the available spaces in the community and what we want to do is look for something that is a long-term lease so that we know that we have consistency and that we have some control over that for the future.
Other questions, comments? I had a question about the Kmart facility. Really fortunate that we're able to have access to that. Are there going to be any costs in terms of getting some of the building itself? Any changes? Will we move bleachers in there for competition, things like that? Is there any other anticipated costs?
So off the top of my head, I just got the draft lease today, this afternoon in my email, so I've skimmed it, but I haven't, I haven't, you know, gone through it in detail. We have actually worked to move all of our home competitions to our opposing team, so we're working through that with all of those districts. Just because of the layout of the facility, we didn't feel we could actually hold competitions, so it would really just be practices only. So that answers your one question about that. There, there are some things with lights and maybe some bathroom things that we would have to just make sure are up to code and things. I did just reach out to the city of Dundas today just to make sure we have temporary occupancy and all the appropriate things that they need to have in place and so it does need to be inspected and all of those things. So we'll work through all of that. I'm not anticipating any major expenditures related to that. I suspect the activities budget could absorb those without issue. The other thing, the lease does indicate that we would be charged utilities, obviously as part of that, so that would be really the additional cost. The lease itself would be free, if that makes sense.
Okay, excellent.
Those are the ones off the top of my head.
Okay, no, good. That's really good. Other questions, comments? No, I just want to echo what Rob said. I mean, you've done an amazing job of putting this together and really making sure that, you know, students were the heart of our decision, your decision-making here and making this all work, so, yes.
That's the obvious question. What happened with Farmington and how did they back out and what happened?
They just had some unforeseen construction delays. Their windows were on back order and so they're in the same boat that we are. They had programming that was supposed to be starting and I think that they've been kind of partnering with Lakeville and sharing space, so I'm not, they didn't, they didn't back out, they just had some unforeseen construction delays.
Didn't perform, so to speak, instead of backing out, just?
Yeah, they just couldn't occupy the space. No windows and, you know, December is not really ideal for practicing athletics.
Not a good thing.
So.
Well, Farmington has done everything that they possibly could to accommodate us, so it was just unfortunate.
Yes.
And we're in a tough spot to ask them anyway, so.
Yeah, and they're, they're feeling very badly about how it's played out, but you can't really control the constructions, so.
I think we just before, we just want to thank the program and Leann and their flexibility and patience as we have gotten this taken care of. Of course, it's not ideal, no one wished that we were here in this circumstance, but it's where we find ourselves and so we just want to thank folks for their patience and flexibility as we've gotten through this, so.
Excellent, okay.
And I meant to thank Farmington for their efforts and stuff and also, I mean, we're in this conference down here, but there's no reason why we don't partner and do more things to the north when we can, but obviously we want to have as many things for our students, you know, locally here, so.
Yep. Excellent. So we do have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions or comments prior to vote? No? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, excellent. I believe, is that the last of? Nope, we have one more item for individual action and that's the American Education Week proclamation. I think it's just such a well-written proclamation about the, just public education in general and so I would like to read that and then we will have a, why don't I have, I'm sorry, it's item for individual action. So is there a motion to approve the American Education Week proclamation as presented? Is there a motion? Rob? Moved by Rob. Rob, moved by Rob. Second, second by Noel. Well, actually, I should have read it first, but I would like to read it because it's really a great one. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, equality, and whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they custodians or teachers, bus drivers, or educational assistants, office employees, or administrators, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, the Northfield Public School Board of Education does hereby proclaim November 12 through the 16, 2018, as the 97th annual observation of American Education Week. So I preempted my reading of the proclamation with the motion, but we do have a motion and a second, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have American Education Week in Northfield Public Schools.
And if you look at the Northfield News tomorrow, you'll see, you know, we've changed things up. We used to have a breakfast in November. We've moved that to the beginning of the year, but we do have the traditional advertisement honoring the employees and their, have hit milestones in terms of their years of service. So we call you to look for that really great ad in tomorrow's Northfield News, so.
Excellent. So do not see the DYC students yet, so we'll move on to items for information, and I'm sure by the time we work our way, at least a portion through the items, we will be able to have that final presentation. So the first being the Enrollment Options Report and Enrollment Report. Dr. Hill.
Yes, so we've got two things together here tonight. First of all, it's the annual report that we provide on enrollment options, and so just as a, what else? All right.
Too early for snowbells.
Yes, that's right. That's all we ask. It's cold enough, but not enough moisture, thankfully. So the Enrollment Options Report, just for background, every year around this time, we produce this report for you, and really, it's a balancing act. It shows you all of the students who are going out of the school district, attending. All right, there you go.
I wonder if something was, hmm, interestingly.
They're just trying to rattle me, so can't be done. So the Enrollment Option Report again shows students going to non-public schools within the community. It also shows students who are homeschooling within the community, and then it also shows the number of students going to charter schools, and then the out of the school district in terms of using the state's open enrollment option, as well as those students coming in. And so if we take a look at the first page, what you'll see on the left-hand side is the students going to non-public schools. You'll see the list of those institutions on the left-hand side, and what you'll see is the 17, 18 numbers and then the 18, 19 numbers. So you'll see that we have five students in addition who are going to non-public schools next year. When we take a look at our homeschool, you'll notice that we actually had an increase in the number of students who are homeschooled, but a decrease in the total number of families who are homeschooling. We're very proud to support homeschoolers. Anita and I support those folks as they come in, as well as Chris Nesset, and so we work with them on fulfilling the state obligations and requirements for that and work through, they are eligible for some dollars from the state, so our finance office works with them on that. We've got, have had a great relationship with our homeschool community. You will see some consistency in our students going to charter schools, actually a decrease of two students as of this report, and so you'll see that, again, we're the proud authorizer of two charter schools within the community that continue to be very strong and proud of that. On the second page of the report, what you will see is the traditional statewide open enrollment options, and you'll see those students that are going out and coming in. And so what you're going to notice on the left-hand side, it's those students who are leaving the school district, and you'll see that we have an uptick in those number of students this year. Now, there's a couple of things I want to point out. Number one, one of the larger items or one of the larger institutions where students are going to using the, under the Enrollment Options Report, is not necessarily really open enrollments, the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative. So remember that we are a member of this Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, but they need to be enrolled in SEBSEC for them to be able to get the state funding. So what happens is, even though a Northfield student who has special needs is enrolling in that particular school, they're still our student, but they are now enrolled in SEBSEC, so that's an explanation, there's an increase of six there. You'll also notice that same item when you take a look at, there's one more I was going to look at here, that there's some like, for example, the Southern Plains Educational Co-op, that's another example of a, another institution that's a cooperative, typically special education facility, Intermediate 287, you'll see that as well. So there's a few of those where you'll notice some changes there. So a little bit of an increase in the number of students who are going out to other traditional public school systems this year. As you take a look at the ones coming in on the right-hand side, you'll see that we are, have a slight decrease in the number of students who are using the open enrollment option piece to come to Northfield, but still, for those of you who've seen this report for years, still a very healthy amount of students who are coming in. And what I really like to point out to folks is that when you take a look at the front couple of pages and you do the math, we still only bring in through open enrollment about, probably about 40% of those students who choose something else. And so while open enrollment certainly has its challenges as well, we also know that it has provided an opportunity for us to gain that state funding, because the state funding does follow the student as they come to Northfield. So, you know, out of 400 and change students, 411 to 403, within the margin of error, so I would say relatively constant. As you take a look at the enrollment report that is also part of the packet, you'll notice that we are settling into the cruising altitude of the year, and that we are, you know, we typically will start with more students, and you'll see that we decrease slightly through the year, and some of that is some of the inside numbers game in terms of, because in our total count, you'll notice that that does not include some of our, it doesn't include our early childhood, it doesn't include our independent study ALC, so some of that is transfer within the system itself. And then you can also see the class size reports on, for elementary students on the following page, and you'll see that we have overall some very appropriate and solid class sizes throughout the system this year. So those are, that is the Enrollment Options Report for 2018-19, and it is also the monthly enrollment report, so I'd be happy to stand for any questions that people have at this time on that. And then I see that our presenters have arrived. Is everybody here?
Excellent.
Okay, so right when we're done with this part, you guys are up, all right?
So questions, comments? I think, Dr. Hillman, you make a really good point, because I think, you know, when you take the, those who are choosing to go outside, predominantly are two charter schools in town, which we absolutely support. I know it's the right choice for a lot of those students. Those that come in, the 403, we still have a net loss of 377 students, so I think the one end of that formula gets discussed in terms of those coming in, but we lose sight of those going out and that we still have a net loss of 377 students, so.
And yet, we still see, you know, we saw an uptick in terms of our total enrollment this year. So remember that enrollment is a whole bunch of things that come together, and so there's a tool that I'm excited to show you in the coming months here. We have secured a piece of software called Guide K-12, and what it allows us to do, it allows us to map the district and look at where all of our students are at, and are they enrolling in or out, and so we're, we're starting to be able to ask some more detailed questions about our enrollment options, and I think it's going to be very interesting for the board to hear as we move forward. So we look forward in the coming months. We're getting trained right now to be able to visualize our enrollment, I think is a really important thing for, for the board as we move forward. So it's a tool that's very powerful, and we look forward to sharing that with you in the coming months.
Yeah, that will be really interesting. Okay, thank you. Well, so what we'll do is put the last two items for information on hold and then switch gears and welcome our wonderful district youth council members to do their presentation. There was an addendum in the table file as well as then their presentation was in the packet, so if we, be sure we have the most updated information, and we welcome district youth council members.
Hello, my name is Ian Math. I'm a junior on the district youth council.
I'm Ethan. I'm a senior on the district youth council and a co-chair.
I'm Elias. I'm a senior on the district youth council.
And this is the fall 2018 update for the district youth council. I'd like to thank you guys for your continued support and your ability to include us in your agenda for today. So the DYC is a student-run organization that is a voice for Northfield's youth, as well as, interacts with the district as well, gets input from youth, and informs youth. This year, we've split the DYC into three subgroups. Before the school year started, we all met together and brought different issues that we thought were important this year, and then during that meeting, we voted on the three big topics that we thought were most important for this year, and those were diversity, stress and sleep management, as well as connecting with administration. So our subcommittee for diversity, it's a continuation of last year's connection with administration subcommittee, which is about up again this year. Stress and sleep management is an evolution of last year's mental and chemical health subcommittee, and we are just more passionate about stress and sleep management this year, so bringing that up. And connecting with administration, this is a continuation of a constant subcommittee that we've had over here since the DYC, and we understand that it's important that we connect with the administration and boards that govern the district.
So first is our diversity subcommittee, and I, I'm not, our representative from this subcommittee cannot be here tonight, so I can't speak as fully toward it as I would like to, but this subcommittee is currently looking into what factors play into the number of students enrolling in AP classes is one of their, one of their points, and such as like reduce free, fully-paid lunch, ethnicity and home language, different factors like that. They're also working with diverse students regarding gender, economics, ethnicity, sexuality in order to increase connection within the school and community. They are currently looking into research that focuses on the benefits of implementing diverse history classes into schools, which is something we've actually looked at a little bit in the past, but hopefully we can make a bit more progress with that this year. Such, such things would be, include African-American studies and gender and sexuality studies, things like that. Also, we are gathering information from classmates about different diversity issues. I don't know exactly what feedback we have about that right now, but that's one thing we're working on. And there's going to be a student survey regarding issues of diversity that we will send out to the student body soon, hopefully. Next is the stress sleep management subcommittee, and so this committee is really looking into the impact of sleep on students and basically issues with, you know, getting enough sleep and how we can encourage that. We are going to have Dr. Hoff come in to speak with us in our next meeting, and he's gonna, I don't know exactly what he's going to talk about, but different things with sleep and youth, and we're going to try to implement methods to encourage sleep and quality sleep schedules for students, and that's all I know about this subcommittee for the moment. And next is the connecting with the administration subcommittee, which is what the three of us are on, and we are defining the administration kind of as both the high school administration, but also the school board. And some things we're working on is, we want to try to help students understand the policies of the school, the district, as well as how those policies are made, and one thing to work towards that is we're working on this school board forum, which I think we're going to talk a little bit more about later, but hopefully to provide students with more knowledge about the school board itself. And that's, that's me.
Okay, so here, we just have three of the main items that the district youth council has been working on so far this square year, and the first one is the composting video. This one was an attempt to communicate the importance of reducing our carbon footprint to our peers opposed to the typical administration-to-student model, so if we get more peer-to-peer interaction, we thought that this would be great. And then also, we were asked by Stephanie Stromy to help, because the composting at the high school has been lacking recently, especially this fall, and we found that the middle school and elementary schools do a great job at composting, but the high school does lack in this, and so the video, we hope will help to curb that. And then next, the school board forum. We are working on this because we feel it is important to allow the students to gain the opportunity to not necessarily understand the workings of the school board, because we feel that that could be understood more easily, but to understand issues that are important to both you and the student body and your stances on those. And so we are really excited to work with the school board because we feel that this communication between the student body and the school board is what we represent as a whole. And then also the student feedback on Flex Hour. This is something new that we have recently started, and so this is just a way for us to communicate how we feel and how our friends feel to the administration, and we think that this is important, and so we're working to find a more formal quantitative way to gather information about how the wider student body feels about Flex Hour, in an effort to make this time during our school day to flow more seamlessly. Okay, and this is just an overview of the groups we serve on, and we are very grateful for Dr. Hillman to allow us to have these opportunities for our members to serve on these boards as representatives of district youth council. And so currently, two members of district youth council serve on each of the following boards, and I'll just talk about each of those a little bit. The wellness committee, we have two people serving on that, bringing a student perspective to the committee that works on nutrition and wellness within our schools. And then we also serve on the policy committee, which, serving on this, we hope that we are able to participate in systematically reviewing the district policies, and we will be highlighting policies to our students that directly affect the students and the school, the student body. And then also the finance advisory committee, we feel is important in gaining an understanding of the financial side of the district and how funding impacts student experiences as well as programs, as opposed to just a general idea of what they do for the district as a whole. We're also on Northfield Forward to analyze the effectiveness of the curriculum and the teaching styles within our schools. We have four students on this committee, and we are actively bringing a student voice into this committee, which we feel is essential, because that's the target of the curriculum. We serve on the facilities advisory committee as well to understand the maintenance and current state of our buildings and the work that goes into keeping so many buildings and sites operational and in good repair. We're also very excited to be a part of the superintendent's committee on diversity. We're excited for this group to get started in the next few weeks, and we believe it will be good in working to ensure that there's a proper representation among students, teachers, and staffs for opportunities provided, but we'll have a better update when it's launched in the spring. And then our Raider Nation Council is something that we're also very excited about, to ensure camaraderie and school spirit among all the students within the high school. And again, this is a new group that's being launched, made up of leaders from a variety of student-run groups with various backgrounds, and they just had their first meeting, and they're going to be working throughout the year to really define their purpose.
Well, thank you for your time and consideration.
Excellent presentation, thank you. I know the four members will have questions and comments, so who would like to go first? Rob?
First of all, thank, thank you very much for your presentation, and I wanted to say that, because I'm also on the policy review committee, that having the students on that committee has been really beneficial, and I think that they've brought really interesting perspective, and, and it's been great to have students on my committee, so I think that's a really good aspect of what you're doing. What I'm wondering is, so you have, like, specific projects you work on, like stress and, and sleep management, and when you're in a group that has, like, special projects that you work on, it can be sometimes frustrating if nothing happens with those projects. I mean, here on the school board, we have, you know, we have a certain schedule of things that we do every year, and, and certain things get done all the time, but- that we do every year, and certain things get done all the time. But since I've been on the school board six years, we've had Dr. Hoff here twice talking about sleep, and we haven't actually had any proposal about changing anything. So do you feel like you will be able to come up with some sort of recommendation or move this ball forward a little bit? Or what do you see as the kind of goal of your work on something like that?
Yeah, I think that's definitely an issue we've had to deal with in the past, is trying to keep up with, like making things move forward and having progress. It's hard because we're all students, and we have different schedules and different activities going on, just keeping up with everything. But I think we always hope to make some amount of change and to have some goals. And we usually tend to do a good job, I think, of setting goals and the idea of kind of a path to how we can get from where we are now to what the results we are wishing for. So I don't know exactly what our plans are with Dr. Hoff, but I would say hopefully we can have some plan after we receive this information to think about where we want to go with it and hopefully create some steps that will lead us to some result.
Because I think, from my point of view, sitting up here, that having your perspective on what is the role of sleep or, you know, the start times that we have now, what is, you know, if we change those, what difference would that make? I mean, getting your feedback on that and then using that as a way to kind of maybe move forward, you know, so that we're all sort of working toward the same goal. So, you know, I would encourage you to think about just, you know, what would your recommendations be, or what is your experience as a high school student of the current start times, and how would you think about changing that? Because, you know, that's a really important point of view for us, to get, you know, practical experience of your day. I mean, I think that that's kind of what happened with the flex time, that you probably, I mean, we've heard that that has reduced stress among students, and I think that that was kind of a response to the on-the-ground experience of students. So I think, you know, any time that you can give us feedback that's helping us see your point of view and how we can practically make the education experience better for you. And I think sleep is actually a really important aspect of it. Thanks.
Aiden, you have a comment?
Yeah, so I mean, sleep was one of the things that we voted on to meet here that was really important to us to change, to see what could be done about this year. And I guess that's the main priority of that Subcommittee right now.
And I think that's one of the reasons, too, we worked through the structure of bringing students to be part of the committees that were highlighted before, because as I started to attend the DYC meetings last year, it was really clear to me that the DYC change is over every year. There's a substantial, you know, so at the board level, you know, there are times when you have a major change for something like you're talking about, that it's gonna take us some time. We have the ability to see that through over multiple cycles, but, you know, students on the DYC may only get that one crack, you know, that year at it. And so working together to see how can we have students who are on these committees that, of course, all support, you know, some of those larger changes? Because we want, I think, one of the important things is what's passionate for the DYC this year may not be passionate for those students next year. I think I'm pretty safe in saying sleep is gonna be okay, you know, until we get something fixed. But I think the key thing is that trying to embed students in the committees to inform our ongoing work, because when we make a substantial change like the one that you're referencing, Rob, you know, that involves a number of those committees, involves the Policy Committee, involves the Finance Committee, a number of other things that it could involve. So I really am pleased with the student participation on these events. And then as we have some of these kind of ad hoc committees that look at big issues, we really are gonna rely on the DYC for those kinds of things. So I appreciate you setting that goal about sleep, because it's, the research is incontrovertible, right? The science has been done. Now it's just a matter of looking, how can we use that science to change policy?
Yes. Well, you have a follow-up?
I was just wondering, I mean, about, since we have new building, or one new building and then changes to some other buildings, if DYC is gonna be involved in some way in, because you've all been to middle school, I mean, to elementary school, and you know, did any, you go to Greenville Park? Okay, so you kind of know what that was like, and you probably have ideas of how a new building could be better, that our students can be on those.
They are, we absolutely, we've been saying that all week, that students who are appropriate will be on the design committees, yeah, if they would like to.
Amy.
Well, first, welcome. I'm so happy that you're here, because you're, as students, the people that we are really trying to serve, and we like hearing from you. I also think that being involved in this sort of Committee and all the different committees that you're on is some of the best real-world experience you can have. I mean, there's a whole nother layer of education going on. That being said, I want to ask Dr. Hillman if we can be sure that we hear a presentation from them again this year, maybe in spring, whatever timing you think is best, because a number of reasons. You've got me interested. I want to know what you're going through and what you're finding out. But also, if you know that you're gonna be coming back in April or in May, that'll give you sort of a deadline to work backwards from. And I find personally deadlines are very motivating. And if you know that we want to hear from you, and we know that we're really interested in hearing whatever you come up with from your three initiatives, maybe that would help get you moving forward as well and determining what sort of information you'd want to come back to tell us about.
Absolutely. I mean, we've standardized that this is the time of the year where the DYC, after they get themselves up and going, they come in and give this report of what's going on for the year, and we will be happy to have them back. So I do think a bookend report, so we'll put it on, let's see, May, probably not the best time, right? So maybe late April?
Yeah.
Okay, guys. Think that May gets taken up by a few things, doesn't it?
We won't do that to them. Well, I would like to encourage you to give them an exact date to work toward, whether, whatever the.
Well, I'd have to look at the calendar here, so whatever the second meeting in April would be, can you look that up quickly, Anita? I'm gonna guess April 24th. Please be right, please be right.
And take back to all your fellow DYCers that we do really want to hear from you to the point where we're scheduling you to come back, and we want to know what you're finding out this year.
Thank you.
I believe it's April 27th.
I was close. I was close.
April 22nd. Put it in your calendar.
It's also Earth Day, there you go.
Earth Day, so you can get them back with some composting.
So any other questions, comments?
Can I ask Elias a question?
I had a couple of questions real quick, too. So, so great to have you guys here. And so I've been fortunate enough to work with Aiden on Northfield Forward and with Andres on the Finance Advisory Committee. And I love the way you articulated what your role is on each of those committees. I thought it was really extremely well done, and nice to see that, that you really see your value and of kind of input that you want to provide on those committees. And I've seen it firsthand in working with the school board liaison committees I'm on. Just to segue for a minute, Ellen Iverson is our school board liaison to District Youth Council, and she expressed her sincere regret that she could not be here tonight. She is on a business trip. But she was very sad to miss this particular meeting for lots of reasons, in particularly because she knew you were presenting tonight. And we appreciate Ellen's work on that, because we know that she, you know, takes her role in working with you very seriously. And we find it, it's extremely important, and it's very important for Ellen, so she was sorry to miss. What I wanted to ask, we've been fortunate enough, every school board meeting, to see school, District Youth Council members here. And I'm just wondering what the processes of your members reporting back to the larger group about school board meetings and some of the type of information that they communicate back, and if there's any sort of follow-up that's done, or just kind of walk me through that sort of process of keeping your council abreast of what's happening in school board meetings, when you've had such great representation this year at our meetings.
Okay. So after every meeting, we generally have two people here at every school board meeting. We have our members fill out a survey just to catalog everything that was talked about. And so generally, we have them write down some of the main ideas that were talked about. If there were three main things that were talked about, we'll have them talk about all those things, just depending on how many things there were. Any questions that they had throughout the meeting that we can discuss as a large group or ask Ms. Iverson about is really important. And then when we have our large group meetings, we have two per month. We get together and we go over everything that was talked about at the school board meetings and filled out directly afterwards, as well as any questions that need to be addressed. And so that's just how we keep the whole board up to date and how, with the questions, really, we learn about what we don't know regarding the school board.
Excellent. Thank you. So, Dr. Hillman, you had.
No, you took my question, which was great. My question was gonna be just to talk about, for those of you who have served on committees, you've all served, first of all, we got Ethan as one of the chairs. This guy can, he can chair a meeting. I really appreciate how you chair the District Youth Council, Ethan, because, as you know, Chair Pritchard's not always the easiest thing to orchestrate the entire meeting, and Ethan does a great job, very impressive. But would you just share briefly your feedback on the committees that you've been on? So if you've been on Northfield Forward, just something that you learned or something that you were surprised about, just any kind of reaction that you have to being part of those committees that you're serving on? Because I think that that's really important for us to hear, is what are you getting out of it? It's one thing for us to be able to go, hey, we got youth voice, great, but what are you getting out of it? Want to make sure we know that. So just brief anecdote.
Well, on Northfield Forward, I was really surprised by the amount of, well, not amount of, but the level of kind of strategizing involved with the different site improvement plans, as well as curriculums that are in place in the schools, and the volume of acronyms.
So I've also, yes, for Don, like Northfield Forward, I was impressed, or maybe even surprised by how much everyone seemed to want the youth voice, and just how much thought went into all these decisions that I hadn't really thought about before. Also, I served on the, I believe, Facilities Action Committee, or I attended the meetings of that group, and I thought it was, yeah, great just to see the process of how we, as a district, get the community together just to talk about these important issues and form plans for the future.
Thanks for your contribution to that. Well, we're thrilled you're here, we're thrilled.
No one has a comment.
I wanted to say the NYU does a great job with an acronym.
Yes.
Excellent.
Good report, thank you.
Any other final questions or comments?
I can say FYI, TTYL in April.
Well, thank you. And as you go back to your larger group, please thank them on behalf of us for all of your work. And I think that your Subcommittee structure is really excellent. I think you guys, your group picked some really excellent projects. We are very much looking forward to hearing back on those, and then some of the ways that you've been able to really contribute to some of the things like Flex Hour, that's really real-time here in terms of needing to make decisions and make changes, and you will be integral in helping that Flex Hour be successful. So thank you for all your work. And it's a long day for you, so you cannot leave.
But you're more than welcome to stay.
You are. But you may likely want to leave, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. So thanks for making that adjustment to the agenda for the evening. We left off, and items for information, the Dundas Dome lease agreement for 2019 as kind of a first read.
Yes, just what we want to do is, Val and I just want to talk through the fact that, again, the Dundas Dome that we started to use a couple of years ago has proven to be a real asset, especially to our spring sports. And so we intend to continue that relationship with the Dundas Dome. And again, it's a year-to-year basis, and we really just are contracting for a certain number of hours. They've been very good to work with in terms of allowing us to carry out over hours that have not been used in the past. And so it's, we just want you to see it, it's exactly the same as it has been the last couple of years, are very close.
Very close. I made a few changes that Noel had suggested last spring, so.
So again, we're not asking for any action this evening, we are just wanting to bring it to your attention. We'll be asking for approval at the next meeting. Unlike other facilities, we can fit multiple student groups in the Dundas Dome, and especially in spring weather, that's just not very predictable. It really is giving our students an advantage, and we are getting them home earlier, because we're able to have, utilize the facilities in such a way that we're not having to stack practices back to back to back to late in the evening.
Jeff?
Last year was a tough year for it now. So I mean, out of the, what is it, 450 and 90 hours?
90 hours, yeah.
Did you use all of that last year?
No, we didn't. So even with the tough spring, we still did not utilize all of it.
That's a really good question, and that is really interesting, because I, my daughter plays softball, and I know, you know, the number of practices, games, you know, it ran the gamut. So that we hadn't used the 90 hours is really interesting, so, good to know.
Yeah. Okay. So this is just the lease as presented tonight for information, and then we would vote on its approval at our next board meeting on November 26th. So if there's any questions between now and then, you can get to Dr. Hillman or Val. Okay. So our last item for information is the lengthy document called the Management Plan for Lead-in Water. Dr. Hillman, providing an overview of that, again, as a first read for approval at our next board meeting.
So for many, many years, we have been testing for lead-in water, I mean, going back far before it was ever a requirement. But there's been some changes in terms of, of course, we've seen some issues in some larger cities across the country that are very public, like Michigan, some other areas, that of course always prompt some legislative change. And so while we have worked with IEA, which is our environmental consultant for decades, I'm guessing, on these kinds of issues, the state now requires that we actually, we had adopted the plan internally, but now they're asking that boards adopt the plan officially. And so the key thing is that this is a, it is something that we are not changing what we've done, in terms of we are complying with what's required, and we have had very few issues over the years. And so what we know is that the way that we have addressed this has worked, we're just gonna need you to formalize that as we move forward. Director Building and Ground Jim Colsoth could not be here this evening, but he will be here at the next meeting, because he is our expert on this. Again, we wanted to bring it forward to you, have it public, so people could take a look at it and develop any questions that they have over the next couple of weeks. But you'll see the detail of the plan in terms of just the requirements and the approaches that we're taking. So again, Jim will be here at the next meeting when we ask you for formal approval. If, as you're getting, as you're working through this document, if there are any things that come up that you, there's a lot of acronyms in this document as well that aren't our normal acronyms that we use. So if something specifically comes up for you that you'd like more information on, please give me a call, and I'll hook up with Jim, and we'll get you an answer to any of the questions that you have. But again, we're taking the recommendations of IEA, this is what they do. They provide excellent counsel for us on this and other topics. Again, recently, in the last couple of years, you've read about radon testing. We've been testing radon for a long time, too. So we have, by using IEA, we have been ahead of the curve on some of these things that have become, you know, more public across the state. So we're very grateful for their support, and again, really formalizing the procedures that we've had in place for some time.
So can you repeat again what government agency is requesting this?
This is a state of Minnesota.
Okay.
So this was something that we had, we just didn't have written down before?
We had it written down, but it was an internal procedure, and so now we've not asked you to approve this before. And so we now are gonna ask you to specifically approve this. In fact, this was actually part of when we, our annual report on indoor air quality. It was something that was part of that process before. Now we are being asked to specifically approve this part of it.
So it was essentially generated internally, or was it generated by?
We worked with IEA to help us develop the plan, and then we have monitored or used the plan for some time. But now it's a piece that we have to move from our procedure. Remember, when we look at procedures, it's things that you, that the administration takes care of on your behalf. Boy, what's going on here?
I think it might fall off.
Oh, yeah. Let's hope not. Very well, it could be. So it's something where we've had a procedure, where we have followed those protocols, but it's not something that we've asked you to formally adopt as, you know, essentially having, while it's not technically a policy, it's the weight of policy at this point.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay. All right, thank you. So that takes care of items for information. We can move on.
We had one more on the table file.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
I apologize.
No, I apologize.
And this is just a very brief update on the Every Student Succeeds Act. And so you, of course, the Every Student Succeeds Act was a And so you, of course, the Every Student Succeeds Act was adopted by the federal government to replace the No Child Left Behind Act. And there's a lot of changes. In fact, some of you have gone to some meetings with me about that. They are really looking at more of a holistic approach to how they're looking at school districts and their providing support to schools. But we did have one school that has been identified for support, and that's our Northfield Area Learning Center. And it's been identified, one of the criteria that can, they've gone from the very punitive approach of no child left behind to a very much more supportive approach. In fact, the people that you work with from the state are now called advocates. It's a complete language change from what it was before. But one of the criteria is four-year graduation rate. And any high school in the state of Minnesota that drops below 67% four-year graduation rate is on the list. By default, and I have lodged my complaints very vociferously, though I absolutely understand and support why the Minnesota plan was submitted and approved, and I do support them in that, every area learning center in the state is on the list for needing support. Because if you think about it, one of the criteria for you to be eligible to attend an area learning center is that you are behind on credits toward graduation. So by default, we're supporting students who during their traditional four-year high school career may have needed a different environment, different support. And in fact, our area learning center is among the best in the state. In 2017, it was named the Program of the Year in the state of Minnesota. We, you hear the report from Darryl Keller here, by all accounts, 100% of the students in that building last year said that they felt safe and welcome at their school. It's an awesome building. But because of this technical four-year graduation rate issue there, and we've had a really good relationship, the people from the Department of Education, from the Regional Centers of Excellence who are helping us out have been very good. We're talking about some, in some schools where it might be an academic performance issue, you know, you can take a look at a curriculum, you can take a look at some specific, this is a lot more than just that. And so looking at that graduation rate and some things that we're working to improve that at the area learning center, but by default, because of the criteria to get into the program, you are going to, most likely, in many cases, you will be taking more than four years. We're so proud, we all know that one of our favorite events of the year is the area learning center graduation. And it's actually quite similar to the National Merit Reception, isn't it? You know, where in this case, a teacher talks about each individual student. So we have to notify the parents of the, of the area learning center this week that the school has been identified as a school needing for support for the graduation rate piece. So I just wanted to make sure, I know we've talked about it before, but I wanted to make sure that we talked about it publicly so that people weren't surprised if they saw that that school was identified for the support, as all the area learning centers in Minnesota are, because they are, access to that program is governed by very specific criteria. And again, one of the most criteria that you get in is that you are behind on credits. We do a great job of catching kids up and helping them get to that point, just as in always within, you know, what the state has determined is the ideal way to graduate. And if you know about the ALC, there's as many different ways to graduation as there are students, and that's why it's successful. So I just wanted to bring that forward to you. We're very, I'm very pleased with the support we're getting from the Regional Centers of Excellence. They're very impressed with the program that we have. We also know that that's a smaller N, right? There's, so Northfield High School graduation, there's 300-some students, right? So that 67% graduation rate is not a problem. We're in the mid-90s, right? It's always been hard to keep it. We went at 95 and above in the 90s for many years. But the issue is here, you're talking anywhere between 20 to 30, you know, 35 graduates a year, so you could have that swing in students who are ready, you know, to be part of that cohort. And I think the state is also still getting their data together in terms of what constitutes the start date, what starts the clock for you toward graduation, some of those things. So everyone's learning, but we're going to send letters home to parents this week, and I wanted to make sure you knew about it.
All right. Excellent. Questions or comments? Okay. All right. So that does conclude items for information. Future meetings, Monday, November 26th. We do have a board meeting on Monday, December 10th at 7:00 PM. That will be preceded by the 6:30 PM World's Best Workforce Presentation, which we will be sure to send notifications. So you can make note of that now, but we'll be reminded at another point about that. And then the next meeting in the New Year is actually Monday, January 14th at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the organizational meeting and then move on to the regular school board meeting. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. So wishes everyone for a wonderful Thanksgiving, and with a motion and a second, all those in favor of adjourning say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned.